You usually don't have any trouble saying, "We only currently say..."
Well, it's not supposed to be all right, though.
If I did?
When we were there, when I was in Chicago, we went and hired this truck. Especially five or seven feet was so nice.
We've been getting a lot of clients from...
Yeah.
That were expecting us.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
And we learned there's trade shows.
Too many problems.
Is that case?
Thank you.
You're always here, though.
Feel better today? Wow. See. Twenty-eight strokes for spread, isn't it? They actually eat that over here.
Three seconds. There it is.
Call the screening to order. Ask you to stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the city council meeting of Linsburg, Kansas, July 3, 2023. We will move to item number three, public input. Is there any public? Thank you. But move to item number four, amendments to the agenda, and I'll call upon our city administrator.
This evening, Mayor, I would like to recommend that we amend the agenda to move item F under new business to be the first new business item, as we do have guests in the audience, and we don't want to hold them captive for the whole meeting. So we'd like to move that to the front.
Any objections? Seeing no objections, we will amend the agenda. Item number five, mayor's report. Couple items. First of all, Bethany Lutheran Church has been accepted on the National Register of Historic Places. You'll recall that we talked about that initial, when they applied, that they have been accepted, which is really outstanding. Listing of the property provides recognition of its historic importance and assures that the significance of the property will be acknowledged as needed. And we're very proud of Bethany Lutheran Church and the acceptance. And this is just a very good thing that stood for the church, of course, and for the entire city. So we want to congratulate them for that, for that honor. Second item, on Friday, we had a ribbon cutting on our bicycles. And thank you for everyone that was involved in that program and those of you who came out to the ribbon cutting. And I'd like to just state, the administrator provided some information this afternoon that shows that the usage has been high, very high, and we're proud of that. And I hope that the interest continues and we see that type of activity. So really, thank you, all of you who were involved and have been involved in that great program. Tomorrow is July the 4th, of course, and ask you, if you don't have other plans, come to Swinson Park at, I think, I think kids are going to start decorating their bikes at about 5:00, and I think the program starts at 6:00. There'll be entertainment and music and so forth and food. So please come on out to the park if you are able. With that, we'll move to item number six, the consent agenda. We have five items. These items are routine. They're enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. Item A is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 5, 2023. Item B is the payroll ordinance number 5430. Item C, payroll ordinance number 5431. Item D, purchase order ordinance number 5432. And E, purchase order ordinance number 5433. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Submit second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there other questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll have our clerk call vote, please.
Councilmembers Corwin?
Yes.
Chrisley?
Yes.
Hebo?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peterway?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. And I move to item number seven. Madam Administrator, do we have any appointments this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Move to item number eight. Do we have any committee reports?
We do not.
Thank you. We will now move to item number nine, which is the first reading of the appearance guidelines. And call on our community development director. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. A little bit of background on the first reading of the appearance guidelines. The Community Development Department has been working in coordination with the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board to produce appearance guidelines for the regulation of building architecture and modifications in the downtown C2 retail business district and signage and public art within all districts in the city of Linsburg jurisdiction. After nearly three decades and at least three attempts to develop and pass appearance guidelines, the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board unanimously voted to recommend the Appearance Guidelines version 3.0 to City Council for review, vote, and approval. The Appearance Guidelines version 3.0 are built on three foundational elements designed to encourage creativity within guidelines or boundary conditions. That's how it's been framed. The first element is described as community-approved design. Community-approved design was developed through public feedback and online surveys made available to the community and is designed to act as inspiration for applicants. Importantly, community-approved design is not mandatory design. Essentially, this just acts, again, as an inspiration. This is something that, to provide upfront feedback and something for somebody who's making a design, a new sign or something, to have a sense of maybe a direction they could possibly go. Of course, that's within the policy. It's intended to be reviewed at a minimum once every four years, but as much as is necessary to reflect the desired aesthetic that the community prefers. The second element is described as design principles, which, when formulated in a not-framing, becomes a set of guidelines or the boundary conditions that we described. So applicants are asked not to violate the design principles with their proposed design. And when they apply, they're asked to explain how they're not violating these design principles. So kind of importantly, this takes a kind of middle ground approach in terms of, in terms of regulation orientation. So as opposed to, so basically, if you went from like a scale of 0 to 100, where zero is nothing and a total free-for-all, and 100 is very prescriptive and deterministic, you must have these paint colors. It must be this exact design. This kind of takes a middle ground approach, where it doesn't tell you what to do. It tells you what not to do and allows the creativity to come from the community. As long as you comply with the sub-boundary conditions, these guidelines, you're allowed to be as creative as possible. The third element includes the ability to request a variance, to venture beyond the boundary conditions, which may become necessary given a specific set of circumstances. So the one that I outline here is, say, you're a franchise. You come downtown or you come into town, say, you're a subway or something, or Pizza Hut. Maybe it's possible that that sign doesn't comply with some of the boundary conditions, but nevertheless, you have to have that sign to operate as a Pizza Hut or a Subway or something. Another example might be an artist might have a very good reason for a design that they have. Maybe it's very particular to a brand they want to establish or has some artistic elements that they've been very thoughtful about, but it falls slightly outside of the boundary conditions. This allows them the ability to apply for a variance and just make a request, as with any other sort of code issue. For example, if you were to put up a fence, you could also apply for a variance in an event that it doesn't quite comply with the standard operating procedures. So again, just as a quick reminder, community-approved design is a sense of inspiration, boundary conditions to create, or design principles to create the boundary conditions within which the community can be creative and a variance process set forth to allow for even variation beyond that. A standard application and evaluation process is also defined within the Appearance Guidelines. The standard application creates the conditions of equity through uniformity and common conditions from which members of the Design Review Board can base a decision. Additionally, the standard application creates a new avenue for expedited approval of standard signage or any design, really, by allowing a first review of the application by members of the Design Review Board before being put on a meeting agenda. So if the members of the board have unanimous agreement, so for example, they call vote yes. If you've seen the standard application in the back, it basically allows the individual to put forth a design, explain why they're not violating these, these, these design principles or the boundary conditions, and then submit the application. If they submit this application and it goes out to the Design Review Board, so the five members, and the five members without discussing with each other, just by themselves, all say, "Yes, I agree. This doesn't violate the conditions that we've established. It's good to go." Then that would allow them, then that would allow whoever is the designated city official, typically it would be somebody in my position, the Community Development Director, it could be somebody else in the future, would be able to approve that sign without being formalized on the agenda. However, if there is not unanimous agreement, so if there's even one vote that it says no, it gets automatically agendized to the Design Review Board at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So there's always due process. If it comes back that there's any disagreement, but if there's unanimous agreement upfront, you can have an expedited approval of a sign. Sometimes that, I'll just kind of give you some background. Most of the signs are unanimously approved. Most of them don't offend anybody on the Design Review Board, and it's not an issue. It's occasionally when something out of the ordinary comes up, and I'd say it happens maybe twice to three times per year, where there is really consistent or robust deliberation by the Design Review Board. But most of them are pretty standard modifications or pretty standard signage that they just say, "Yeah, this looks great." So we set up this meeting, we wait the time, and then everybody's like, "What's happening with the signage?" This would allow that to move a little bit quicker, but still have the due process in there. Finally, if the applicant requests a variance on their application, the application would automatically be added to the agenda for the next Design Review Board meeting without a first review. So if you know upfront that you're not going to comply with the, with the Appearance Guidelines as it's listed here, you can say, "I just want to apply for a variance," and then you automatically get onto the agenda for that. So we know that upfront. We don't have to go through the procedure. Just take it to the Design Review Board. So finally, to kind of wrap this up, the Appearance Guidelines 3.0, version 3.0, were designed to encourage the abundant creativity found within the community without being unnecessarily prescriptive or deterministic, as I said before. This policy approach aims to strike a middle ground between limited oversight and absolute oversight, creating the conditions for better design outcomes and voluntary compliance from the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this. The recommendation unanimously from both the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board as voted in the last meeting, of course, is, is to review and approve and vote on this, but this is just a first reading, so there's no action necessary at this time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and go over any details.
Questions for Jordan?
Yes. I, I know nothing about this, so this is all new to me. So I swear I read this like seven times, but... Okay, so there's already a Design Review Board?
Yes.
And they already like say what signs can go up and can't go up and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so they have, they have two, three basic imperatives right now as it's set up. So anything within the C2 retail business district, which is downtown businesses for the most part in this downtown area. Anytime you make any exterior modification to your structure, so whether that's new paint, if it's new architecture, or new signage, that goes to the Design Review Board for approval and is required by ordinance. But signage... Yeah, okay, but signage applies everywhere in town. So if you put up a new sign anywhere, that requires approval. So yes, we do have a Design Review Board. They do meet mostly on Zoom, probably two times per month. Yeah.
And what are the violations that people don't follow?
Well, yeah, so technically, this is, this is where all of this problem arises. So I'll kind of give you some backstory. The city adopted what is in, in the code. It's Division 2 Precise Plan of Design, but within that, they talk about required Appearance Guidelines, where this comes from. So the city adopted these, these requirements to comply with the Design Review Board's decision, to go through an application process, and the Appearance Guidelines are supposed to inform the Design Review Board as to the decisions that they can make, although they are not mandatory. It says that specifically in the ordinance. However, after this was adopted in the 90s, the city was never actually able to adopt a set of Appearance Guidelines, so that's where I said it's been three decades in the making. There was an effort in the 90s, there was an effort in the 2000s, and also in the teens. The long and short answer of this is because of the way the ordinance reads, where Appearance Guidelines are not mandatory. You technically have to comply with the Design Review Board, but if you didn't, there's virtually no set of repercussions for that. You could also just continue to appeal it to, to District Court if you wanted. So you could appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then you could appeal that. And basically, my sense is that if this went all the way to court, you could do whatever you wanted. So it's a weird, toothless kind of, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's a really interesting policy. It sets the grounds for some oversight without really putting any teeth in it.
Yeah, it makes no sense to me. So that's why I was reading this, like, what are we talking about? I also did not know there was a Design Review Board. So, so is the not part, is that like something from the, like, nationwide that people do? That seems so unfriendly and not inspirational to me. So I was wondering where that, when I was going through the application and all that stuff.
So, no, actually, it's not something that's common, that's commonly done. I think the way that this came out after, some of this is informed by history. A lot of it's informed by the conversation that the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board had, and then also from the feedback that was received in the first couple rounds of surveys. We were talking about orientation towards oversight. So when I talked about that 0 to 100 scale, where zero being there's absolutely nothing, it's a total free-for-all, you can do whatever you want, and 100 being you must have these colors, and it's only these three colors, and you must have this typeface and font, and it must be these dimensions. There are a lot of communities like that. One of them, for example, is Vail, Colorado. If you've ever been there, you know it's like very uniform and very kind of cookie cutter and precise, but also very beautiful. It works for them. But based on the, the history of the Appearance Guidelines never passing, never getting any momentum in this community based on that approach in the past, everybody basically said they wanted to go a different direction, which is to say, "We're very creative in this community. We just need some kind of guidance." The not-framing is basically, it's, it's a sentence structure which says, and I can read it here just for the record, and so everybody knows what we're talking about here. Let me see, let me get it. So basically, you establish, you establish these, these principles of what is unacceptable in design, and then you say, "This is not. You can't do this." So in a well-designed and aesthetically pleasing Linsburg, the community is not subject to buildings, signage, and/or public, and/or public art that. And then it lists these design principles. So it does tell you what not to do, but it doesn't tell you what to do, which is the encouraging part. It gives you more ability.
Depending on how you read it, whether it's encouraging or not. I, I love the negatives, so, but I also am not a design designer, so not a thing I know a thing about.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilwoman Pearson?
I'm going to that not design. Proving a negative is really something that I find very inform. And secondly, that almost invites a wholly subjective comment here, that this is not tacky because it's identified with my brand or it's identified with my product, or, and yet, public comment might disagree. And for that matter, the design may not disagree. So this whole notion of proving a negative is kind of a debate in the background, too. And so that, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me either in that regard. It's, it's going to end up being a conflict of subjective interpretations if this then comes before the board.
So let me ask you this. So first of all, yes, proving a negative is subject, is certainly subjective, much more so than saying you can only have a blue and a red and a yellow. That's Swedish, for example. Again, there were a couple reasons why that approach was taken. One, because people didn't want to be told what to do. There's an element of this kind of fine dance where you make policy that you want people to comply with, and also policy that actually does its job. If, as we all know, if you make policy that's too strict, people won't comply. If you make policy that's not good enough, there's really no point. I would argue that's the case right here. There is objectivity within the subjectivity, for example, in the Design Principles 4 and 5, where it talks about too many colors in typeface and also inappropriate colors in typeface and font selections, where it defines specifically, for example, too many colors as more than four colors on a building, more than five colors on a sign. There's no limit to the number of color selections for public art. So that means on a building, you can have a primary color, a secondary color, and also two accent colors. But at the point you get to five, it becomes too much. It doesn't say it has to be blue. It doesn't say it has to be green. It just says you can be creative. It just can't be too crazy. That's kind of what it says. The other thing that I'll say is the Design Review Board will always be subjective, as I think any policy and any, and any litigating body will be. I don't think there's ever a point, unless you get really, really, really prescriptive, where, where you're going to take that subjectivity out of it. And I think, and the Design Review Board grapples with this and sometimes struggles with it as to making design decisions, what's appropriate in the community. You're never going to get away from that unless you get really specific and precise. But I think that is sort of the awesome power of the board and why they're selected and vetted and trusted for this process is to say, "We trust you to make a subjective decision on behalf of the community." You're never going to get away from that, in my opinion, in this process, but I take your point.
I just think it's awkward, and I'm going to be really interested to see how this plays out in real life.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilwoman Pearson?
I was just going to say, I had sort of a similar, like, this is so strange when I first read it, but actually, when I kind of read through the application, I think it's interesting because it kind of forces the applicant to prove, it takes them to the next step, because it's a movie quote, right? Everyone thinks they have good taste and a sense of humor, which of course, everyone can't possibly have. But, but when you, when you phrase it in the negative, they have to upfront say why they think it doesn't. So I, I actually think it has some interesting potential versus everyone just saying it meets this straight up, instead of how you articulate why they think it meets the not. Even though in structure, it's a little awkward. I, I like it, I think. But I am interested to see how it plays out in practice.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pearson?
First of all, I think you and the committee did a good job pulling this together. Because starting player out here to hit it to here is pretty remarkable. I, I share a couple of these concerns also. I guess I would feel really awkward if I were to put a new sign up or want to put a sign up or I want to paint my building and the committee says it's tacky. I mean, I don't know if there's better words for it, but tacky and garish. Kind of, I don't know what else you say, but like, I gotta go prove that I'm not being tacky.
No, I thought the same way.
So that might be something, but I, I don't know. The question I have is, I guess as a business owner, and how do we go? Like, okay, so let's say I'm going to repaint my building the same color. Just, I'm going to freshen it up, which I'm going to have to do for Hillings West. Am I supposed to go before the committee to do that? Or I guess, I guess we need citywide, just clear. I think if people know their rules, they'll want to follow them. But the problem is, nobody really knows what the rules are.
Yeah.
So I think this will help that in the long run, but those are the types of things that I would know if I need to do it or not.
Yeah, so in that case, no. If you're just repainting your building in the same colors, it's already approved design. You're not making a modification. You're just doing standard upkeep and maintenance. In that case, you, you don't need to go to Design Review Board. A recent example of this is Row Flush. Same thing. They called in and they asked if they needed to get approval, and they said they were just repainting it the same color. The answer was no. And they went ahead and did it. It looks great. If you look to the very back, it's on page 30 in the appendix, the Design Review Board Application Evaluation Process. That roadmap is created to help define that, and the Design Review Board has expressed your specific concern, Councilmember Peterson, a lot. And so I, that, I think, has been taken into account. The thought here is that this, this roadmap that's been developed, as well as sort of a summarized copy of any policy that we come up with, can be given to any business or property owner once they register for utilities, just kind of dropping that packet in the same way that we already do that with other information items. But that was mentioned in nearly every meeting, because that's part of the problem, is that we have a set of rules and not everybody even knows we have a set of rules. And as, you know, you can be in the government body and not even know, you know? So it's, it's that sort of ambiguous at this point. And usually with the problem, the problem arises, if there is a problem, when somebody does something and they didn't know the rules or that there even was a process, and then we have to go like back and prove it, but then at that point, it's already done. So what are you going to do? You're going to say, "Don't do the sign." You know, that we don't really have any authority to enforce, to say no anyway. It's, it's a weird process. So yeah, better communication is key, I agree.
I think, like I said, most people, we have this, I think most people try to follow the rule. And my other, just one other quick question. On the signs, you showed some examples. Do we, in our current ordinance, do we have an ordinance that says if we can have signs going out perpendicular to the building or has to be affixed to the wall?
Yeah, you can, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, like the new, the new signage that's kind of recently popped up.
Yeah, it looks really sharp, but I just, I, I think it's a good idea, but I didn't know if there was clearly could or cannot be that.
You can, it can't, I can't remember the exact, I can't remember the, the specific dimensions. It can't protrude out from the wall beyond a certain point, and it has to be a certain height. And I think the height's over eight feet, so that way somebody can't walk into it if they're blind or something and hit their head. But yeah, there is could.
Okay. I think when we get this all done, if we could kind of lump all those types of rules together for the businesses or property owners, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the case, of course, that he wants to repaint, it's going to be the same color, and you suggested that that was pre-approved, and so, yeah, he doesn't need to apply for anything. What if somebody's painting the same color that's not really approved? I mean, does that exist?
So, okay, let me just clarify. So you're saying if it is, if something, like a sign, was put up and it wasn't approved previously, and they just want to fix the sign, then what do you do?
Right, or, or paint again, but I'm going to paint it the same color, but it wasn't really approved before.
So that's an interesting case that I haven't seen come up. But it certainly could, because I don't know all the stuff that's been approved. We don't really have that great a record-keeping going back that far for this. So yeah, I suppose it probably could happen. It would probably fall under some sort of grandfather clause that whatever already exists works.
Okay.
Is my sense.
I mean, I don't even know if that exists within the rules that there are, but...
Yeah.
I have a color, maybe it's not really approved, and they're going to paint it again. Is that something that...
Well, with the history of essentially an ineffectual process leading up to now... Well, with the history of essentially ineffectual process leading up to now, with virtually no guidelines.
Yes.
You know, that scenario would easily come into play.
Yeah.
In that somebody just did something, and there really wasn't any input anymore, because officially, it was...
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe if I can get to maybe one of the concerns in the question, I don't think this is about retroactively policing design decisions and aesthetic and signs that have already been erected, or buildings that have already been painted. I think this is kind of about moving forward. So quite honestly, it's really hard to find information on signs that have been permitted going back before 2016, so I couldn't even tell you. And if I couldn't tell you, my approach has been, if I can't tell you, then I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. So, yeah.
Hopefully, City Hall approves, because we can vote on it.
Yeah, it wasn't approved. It's on the Swedish.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Jordan, for your work on that, and we'll look forward to continuing discussion and consideration. Item ten, I don't believe we have any old business.
That was Mark.
Thank you. So we will move to item eleven, which is new business, and we will begin with our new item A, which was F on the agenda, McPherson County Housing Study, and then we'll again, again call on Jordan to our Community Development Director.
All right, short break there. Okay, countywide housing study. So a little bit of background, the Community Development Department's been working alongside the other McPherson County communities, within a group called the McPherson County Housing Task Force since the beginning of 2023. I actually think this may be kind of formulated at the end of 2022, I was looking back through my notes, but it's about that time. Of the initiatives identified by the group as a need is a countywide housing study, which would include all communities in the county, so all incorporated towns. This initiative has been gaining steam with likely completion this year pending funding. So the idea behind a study is that every community is included in the study, meaning that it would be comprehensive and mutually intelligible. This will allow county communities to collectively apply for grant funding, so for example, you could collectively apply together for moderate income housing, utilize multi-site or, and/or multi-jurisdictional applications. So for example, one of the challenges in rural communities, but this applies to McPherson County and McPherson City, is that it is hard to build at scale here in a way that makes building housing profitable or worthwhile, especially when compared to primary markets in Kansas, like Wichita, anything in Johnson County, Topeka, and Lawrence. So we wouldn't be considered like a primary development, or community to develop in for housing, probably not even a secondary community, those might be places like Manhattan, Salina, maybe even Hutchinson. We fall into that maybe third tier of rural communities, and attracting developers is really difficult. So by combining our efforts into a mutually intelligible housing study, we could even start doing something like, when I said multi-site developments, is you have a little bit of land here, we have a little bit of land here, you have something over here, Galva and Inman and McPherson and Linsburg, and we can pile this together in one potential package to entice a developer to build housing throughout the county. Okay, let's see here. Okay, additionally, as a further benefit to Linsburg, staff had planned to develop a comprehensive housing plan with long-range goals for the community, which has already been identified in the adopted strategic plans in the built environment and neighborhoods and housing sections of those plans. Data obtained through this study will have great impact on this plan. So just for some background, the comprehensive housing strategy, that will now be the task of the next Community Development Director when they come in, will require a housing study to support that, the data to support it. So either we need to do it now, or we need to do it at some point, but it needs to happen. We need to have relevant data to support a comprehensive housing strategy moving forward. So the current cost is procured via a request for proposal. This is for all the communities together, is $24,000, and is allocated across seven McPherson County communities according to population size. Importantly, the city of McPherson will not be a part of this study because they completed a housing study a few years ago with the same organization who would be doing this, RDG Planning and Design. They completed, again, McPherson Housing, McPherson's housing study, and would be hired to complete ours. Another thing that's not in this agenda item, this was also the same organization that completed the Kansas-wide housing study recently, eighteen months ago, from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. That was a huge study that kind of went more macro in terms of its data, and didn't dive so much into county-specific or community-specific data. But the point is, is that it's a reputable, it's a reputable company that's done this in Kansas, and has a lot of relevant data to do. So yeah, anyway, this would allow studies to be integrated as part of the whole, and separated also would be necessary for community-specific grants. So you could combine this study for collective grants, you could also break it apart for Linsburg's specific grants, that allows a lot of utility. Importantly, by coming together, it would be cheaper to do it as a county, as well as having the cross-jurisdictional benefits, because we all kind of live and work in the same local McPherson County, Salina County economy. But we will also be able to move forward with our own housing efforts without other communities if they're not ready to get on board. So the group effort, just kind of importantly, the group effort in this county coalition is being led by the McPherson Housing Coalition. These are our guests here today. This is Chris Goodson and Carolyn Moore, who are here, the executive directors of the McPherson Housing Coalition. I've served on their board for about a year, and they've been really great to work with. They're here to answer questions and talk about their work with MHC, and also with this county coalition in this study. So with that, the recommendation is a motion to approve the expenditure for $9,200 to participate in the McPherson County Housing Study as presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pearson.
You may have mentioned it, but I'm not sure. McPherson, since they just had their study done two years ago, will they be able to take the data from that and incorporate it in with this study, so it's still going to be part of our study?
Yes. Yep, it would be like the first big puzzle piece in the puzzle.
Okay. Councilman Pressley, does this stay within the boundaries of each of these communities? Or is there consideration given to maybe land that is perhaps annexed of all the effects of work, and looking at that as potential for meeting other needs?
Yes, so does, does the land that currently exists within the county that's not annexed, does that become a part of the study?
Does that become part of it?
I, I think it can be. I don't think those details haven't worked out, but certainly, I think that's a reasonable thing to include in the countywide housing study.
Because I know, we had some discussions about land that has potential.
Yep.
That's very promising.
Yep.
Councilmember Smith?
And the funding source, general funds, contract services, it's within our budget. It's not money outside of it. Procedure.
Correct, so contract services, we allocate funds for contract services across all departments. So this would be something that would come from the industrial development area that Jordan is the director of. So this was not a budgeted item, but there is some give and take, and we are under budget, so we feel comfortable with where he is under budget in other areas that we can, we can move forward with this without it being...
I was also saying, as far as the industrial development fund goes, that fund has been probably spent to eighty percent capacity the last two years, so we always had to know we're going to have a little bit of extra that has carryover. So yes, I think it's possible.
What if we approve this and none of the other communities do?
Okay, so if that happens, I will allow maybe Carolyn and Chris to comment on the other communities involved. My census is that every community has already committed, except for maybe one besides us. I think if we don't commit, it would be a pretty big hole in the, in, in the effort, and it would be, it would have to be made up for grants or private donations or something. Conceivably, it could still work. I think it would, it might, it might torpedo the effort, but it might not. I don't totally know. The other communities have committed. Again, I'll have Carolyn and Chris speak more directly to that. But yeah, this, I think, would make it more challenging if we didn't do it.
Further questions? Counsel, you have a proposed motion. If you are here today.
Were they going to, were they going to?
Do we, do, okay. Perhaps if you could speak to that last question in particular. Please, please come up and announce it, you know, who you are.
So the last question that you had was, would it torpedo the efforts? We're actually, we will actually get grant funding.
Could you give your student name, please?
Oh, Chris Goodson, I'm sorry. I'm Chris Goodson, this is Carolyn Moore. So yes, if we, if it was, if some of the communities decided that they weren't going to participate because of funding, I know this is a weird time of the year to ask for funds, because it's not in your budget, we will have some grant, we will get some grant funding. We've already got something in our back pocket that'll help to pay for that. Some of the communities couldn't come up with a total amount for their communities, and so we said, well, whatever you can come up with, we will supplement with other grants that we have available.
We do have a commitment from Inman and Marquette. We have a meeting with Wyndham coming up, and Canton. All of the city commissions meet on the first Monday of month at the same time.
So, yeah. We've got to be everywhere, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but we're confident that ninety percent of them are going to do this, that everybody understands the importance. I did bring a couple of things, I don't know if you're interested in it at all. My first and housing coalition's actually been around since 2008, I don't know if you all are aware of that. I have our support services summary, so it might be interesting for your council to know what we do, what's available for the people in your community. We're pretty active over here with some of our support services for families. We have an emergency solutions grant, which is homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and yes, you have homeless people here, we've helped them before. You have a tenant-based rental assistance, we have a tenant-based rental assistance program that helps seniors who can't pay for all of their rent. Of course, now we have Lift Up Linsburg. By the way, you're making everybody look bad with your Lift Up Linsburg, because I can't get people in McPherson City to paint people's houses, so you guys are awesome. But anyways, I do have this, if you're interested in all, at all in our services that we have. And the other thing that I actually brought was the McPherson Housing Coalition economic impact. You know, a lot of people think that low-income housing and that type of thing is really a drain on their community, but we figured, I talked to a person who handles funds, and he said, you know, you guys add $3 million to the McPherson County economy with the programs that you have, and the things that you build, and the money that you save each community, because when you're helping a family stabilize, they don't need to use the emergency room for their doctor, they don't need to do specific things. And so I do have that as well, that, that economic impact, so if you're interested in any of that, I can, I can get that to you. But that's who we are and what we do. So what other questions do you have for us?
Questions from the council.
I didn't hear you mention Maldridge. What was the status of Maldridge?
So right now, they're not looking like they maybe don't want to participate. However, we do have funds to cover that amount. Of course, that, that belongs to the group of the people that did pay for that, but we need to do a countywide study. It doesn't make sense to leave the city out. So if cities are saying, hey, maybe we don't want to participate, then we'll say, okay, fine, we're still going to do that study. But it does belong to the, to us, so, and cities who fund it.
Further questions?
Yeah.
Okay, counsel.
Move to approve the expenditure of $200 to participate in the McPherson County Housing Study as presented.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, the questions on the motion. Seeing no questions, we'll have our proxy call, please.
Councilmembers Bruce.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vanderweig.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Horwitz.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion passes. We will now turn our attention to item B, fire department bunker gear, and we have our fire chief with us this evening. Welcome, Mr. Clark.
Hi, Chief Davis is not available, so I sent me in instead. If you haven't figured out, I'm not really sure what I'm doing. If you have this thing in front of you, I hope. Every year, we get three, we try to get three sets of bunker gear, so we don't have to come with you at one point, to get twenty-four sets of bunker gear is one huge thing. This year, we have, it should about finish us out for the guys we have on there now, so everybody will be under the newer bunker gear. We got to the bids, and failed fire was the lowest one, and that's what we've done with in the past, there's really a little gear, so I don't know if I... Any questions or...
Questions for Chief Clark? I think we all have seen that, anyway. Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here this evening, and for your presentation. Counsel, you have a proposed motion in front of you.
A motion to approve the purchase of three sets of bunker gear as outlined in the, I don't know what that's called. Agenda.
Second. That's your motion, that's what I'm saying.
We have a motion and a second, the questions on a motion. Seeing no questions, we'll ask our party to please call.
Councilmember Vanderweig.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Horwitz.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, counsel. We'll now turn our attention to item C, the Northeast Ball Field Restrooms, and call on our city administrator, Kristi Morpke.
Thank you, Mayor. This was originally prepared by Recreation Director Beth Ferguson. Her last day with the city was on Friday. I did talk to her today, and she said, do you have all the answers you need? Are you going to call me after the meeting? So she is still very much plugged in, even though she has already moved. So we thank her for that, she's probably actually watching, so. I appreciate that. I appreciate that Beth put this together and prepared the agenda report, I will be presenting it this evening. So the Linsburg Recreation Apartment and USD 400 partnered to apply for a David Nutt Grant for the Northeast Ball Field Improvement Plan. The grant was to help get the field back on track and playable for both recreational programs and the Smoky Valley High School baseball team. Priorities in the grant included fencing, dugouts, shade, backstop, a scoreboard, and a transportable bathroom trailer to be used during peak times at the ball field. The city was awarded the David Nutt Grant along with USD 400, and we were presenting that in April, in the amount of $145,000. Since that time, we've been putting together the plan for all of these different items. The city took the lead for the bathroom trailer, and the school district has been taking the lead for the other items as outlined. So this evening, we are presenting to you a two-stall, transportable bathroom trailer that would be used at the Northeast Ball Fields during peak times, and which would be transported to locations otherwise throughout town for items, festivals such as Midsummers and Hillings Fest. And then the trailer would be housed at the Linsburg Golf Course the remaining time in place of the current fortified. The trailer would be owned by the city of Linsburg, but a partnership with USD 400 would allow them to use the restroom trailer for their sporting activities at that field. It would be cleaned and maintained by city staff, dumped by Salina Septic, they provide current services at the ball field and the golf course already. Quotes were requested from three vendors, as outlined in your agenda report. Comforts of Home came in at $36,614, Elk Creek Trailers was $59,721, and the third that we asked did not provide a quote. So in the agenda packet, you can see the specs for the Comforts of Home trailer, it's a twelve-foot trailer, and you can see on the second page, all of the items that would be included in detail, in case you had any questions about what would be in the trailer. So if approved, the city would purchase this, and then we would transfer the rest of the grant money to USD 400, because they will be ordering the rest of the items. So the grant came to the city, and we would then transfer it to them. So the grant came to the city and we would then transfer it to them after purchasing this trailer. So there are two recommendations before you this evening. The first is a motion to approve the purchase of the two-station, twelve-foot restroom transportable trailer from Comforts of Home in the amount of $36,614. The second motion is to approve the transfer of the remaining balance, which would be $108,386, to USD 400 in order for them to finalize the remaining items.
Are there questions?
People often ask me what we do on city council. I'm so excited to tell them, I'm going to Florida. This is a very exciting idea. This is far more cost-effective than building a bathroom at that field. And we are very excited and very grateful. I think it's very inspired, honestly. I mean, all jokes aside, the, a multi-use bathroom, genius.
Well, you'll see a shower, but. Counsel, ma'am?
The only concern I have hearing this is that peak season and the festival season at the ball diamonds and in town kind of coincide with the peak golf season. So eliminate the restroom is a big chunk of the golf season. Seems like we're gonna have a kind of a hole to fill.
I believe that the porta potties would remain at the golf course, I believe. And these would then?
Be the extra?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions, counsel? Well, I am just curious, more than anything, I was looking forward to accessibility issues here. And there's this one line here about lowering trailer with fold-up random railing for wheelchair access and such, and I simply don't, I can't visualize that. You know, I'm glad it was considered, but I don't know if there's any need to explain any further to just allay my ignorance, but I just found that intriguing. I didn't know if you had to lower the trailer in order to access. Is there somebody there pushing the button or?
The, are you seeing the item that's $10,500 in optional items?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, it's almost like a lift, so it lowers down and then it's automatic and it raises up.
Oh, okay.
You know, it would require electricity, obviously, but it would, it would raise up to be level with the entry.
Because I didn't see.
We did not include that as an optional item?
No, we did not, okay.
I do have a question. There's a two-part motion here. You know, the first part being approval of the bathroom for $36,614. The other part is transferring the funds. So just kind of a refresher here for my benefit and probably the public's too. What is the arrangement between the city and the school for the ball dynamic yet? Who maintains it, who owns it, how's that working? And why are we transferring money to the school to do this?
Well, the grant was written as a partnership, so, because we do share that field. So we have a memorandum of understanding with the school district for the shared fields that we have. This is one of them. So I don't have it in front of me, which I should have brought. But there are certain times, certain like months and dates where the school district uses it. And then there's a peak time when the recreation apartment uses it. So during the time when the school district is using the fields, they maintain it, they mow it, they, you know, do all of the maintenance to it, during the time that we are, we do it. So the trailer would be, we would own it because we would also use it for other things. It would remain at the ball field during the summer, basically, during that peak season for recreational sports out there and for Smoky Valley when they're playing. During the times that they're using it, that they're programming the field, they would be responsible for cleaning it and, you know, supplying it and things like that. When we're using it, we would be responsible, but ultimately, we would have ownership of it. So it's almost like a tiered system where we, you know, there's a ranking and priority to who's using it when. And we sit down as a group, we do this also with the fields that we share with Bethany, the athletic directors get together and the recreation director and figure out the schedule and all of that. The transferring of funds is because all of the rest of the items are really geared to what they need. They have a more specific list of criteria that they need for backstops, dugouts, fencing heights, things like that than we do for recreation. So they have been taking the lead on setting those standards for what is needed. And they have the connections to the kind of people that would be building that, you know, putting those in, also because we don't have a recreation director at the moment. We do, she just isn't starting until the end of July. It makes more sense so as not to hold up the process to allow the school district to procure the rest of the items, to move forward with the field.
But only one dislegion can apply for? For the grants, right? So didn't you have one, one?
We did, yes.
Yeah. So that's why the grant is transferred.
I guess that's a good question. So if someone were to trip and fall and hurt themselves coming out of a bathroom, then we get sued. Is it the city's responsibility or will it be the schools? What if it happens during their, let's say it's in the spray, but they're playing ball out there? Or we still, why hold during that time? Or is it, do we shift responsibility, liability along with responsibility? Or is it always our?
Well, if I may, the area negligence and what you're talking about is just, it's extremely fact-specific. And the way I say that is because the attorneys that litigate this stuff are specialists in the stuff that goes deep and deep and deep and deep. It can depend on who owns the property, it can depend on who set it up, it can depend on all sorts of things. It's highly specialized. But without looking over everything to give you a for-sure answer, probably whoever's using it at the time would assume more liability. There's a lot of wrinkles to that, but that would be the basic general answer.
I guess the reason I ask is we're exposing our, or at least it seems like we're exposing ourselves to something we have no control over when the schools got it and vice versa.
We will have to fine tune the MOU, the MOU. We have not gone into all of that yet because our focus was on getting everything purchased and kind of in motion. But we, we have another meeting planned in August where we would begin to put all of that kind of information together in our MOU.
Further questions?
So we better not put our city logo on. Well, just in terms of maintaining it, keeping the sprinkler systems functional, operational, mowing, I mean, when they're using it, they do that, when we're using it, we do that, is that kind of how?
It's just kind of a shared ownership trust, yeah. I mean, it's outlined, but, you know, it works.
Counsel, Mr. Pressley? Well, since I was apparently disabused of what I was thinking here, so we do not have accessibility function here.
I believe we did not include that.
Okay.
That would be an additional $10,000.
Yeah, that'd be $10,500, but, you know, we did not include that, okay. I misread that. Just off of some concern for me.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd say it is ADA compliant.
There would be a step.
Kind of hard to manage with the wheelchair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do have grandparents who go to ball games.
Based on the spec sheet, it is not included.
Okay. Though I'd like first to at least consider some sort of ramp method or something along those lines, that this could be pulled in next to, or the ramp could be put up next to it or something along those lines.
Could we amend the moment?
Sure. Counsel, Mr. Pearson?
Then I think that's a great point. Now, if we were starting to look at accessibility issues and the cost of this going up, I have no idea, what would it cost to build a permanent restroom facility there? Are we getting to the point where it'd be better to have a permanent structure? And my question would be, we're gonna spend this on a portable one, what's the expected life of this? Is it five years, ten years, twenty years? And if we were to have a permanent structure, I assume that would last thirty, hopefully thirty years versus this being, I would assume a shorter duration item?
I would say, yes, it's a shorter duration item in terms of life expectancy. I think a lot of that depends on how it's cared for. But in order to build a permanent structure would require running a water line, which would be very costly.
Yeah, just the infrastructure itself would be, you're talking a hundred thousand dollars and then on top of that.
Is there water out there already? They're not watering the drains?
Sewer. There's water. Irrigation water out there.
In the way out, but there's no, there's no water and there's no sewer out there.
Right. You got their electricity too, maybe not as far.
Is that on the list, electricity?
We don't, we're adjusting electricity, yeah.
For school boards?
Yep.
So I guess maybe the, the accessibility, I mean, has accessibility for the whole site been assessed? I mean, that's maybe the bigger, it doesn't matter, I mean, certainly it's important, but maybe more holistically than just the bathroom, I guess.
Well, that's a good point, because right now, there's, there's really no concrete or sidewalks out there, right? It's just on grass. So you're gonna set a portable unit out there, but if you don't have accessibility to even get to the ramp, then you're not really accessible. If you're trying to get a wheelchair, I mean, to your point, a wheelchair through a mud bowl somehow. I mean, those, that's kind of where we're at, I think. Good points all the way around, but yeah, it just kind of, one thing leads to another. And the site right now, as far as I know, it is not, lends itself to a lot of accessibility.
Man, I still think this is a good idea. I think there's more work to be done for that whole field to be something fully utilized. And maybe that has to come before us again, or come before us at another point. But, yeah, I.
I think, I hesitate to speak for the school district, but in those meetings that I have been in, when we're talking about this field, it currently doesn't meet the criteria for the school district to play on it. So for us to work within the confines of the grant money, we're trying to address all of the needs that we can within that budget to make it playable because it needs to be, you know, it needs to have all of these things in order to be included on their calendar as a playable field. So holistically, yes, we need to probably look at that. We absolutely need to look at the accessibility of the entire site. I know that it is part of a larger sports complex vision that is far bigger than any one of the fields. But we're just trying to address the needs as we can within a specific budget to make it as playable as possible for as many teams as possible.
Does Kansas High School Activities Association have any guideline for, you know, what is fundamentally accessible for their, for their teams to play on?
That would be a question for Kai Swisher, so we can, I can bring that to him.
And then I'm just thinking about our recreation too. And that's where we get a whole lot of folks involved, watching, giving the umpires a hard time. Counsel, Mr. Pearson?
I guess we're asked to approve this. I feel like we're approving just a little piece of a plan, that we don't know what the whole plan is. I have no concept of, are you talking eventually concession stands, parking lot? Are we gonna put up lights? Are we, is, how are we gonna incorporate it with the rest of the complex of Bethany College? Is there a plan for all this? And I guess it'd be better to see the whole plan instead of, okay, we're gonna approve this, but I don't have any idea what's going over here until next month and you'll come back with something else.
I can tell you the plan for the field itself. The short-term plan is to get it playable so that there's another field that we can program into the schedule. In terms of the entire plan for the sports complex, we have not had those conversations yet because it is far outside the budget for either the city or Bethany or the school district, you know, in the short term. So long-term, yes, plans are moving. We have discussions about what those, what that area looks like. But the short-term goal was to just get this field playable. So we're trying to check all the boxes that we can within the budget. But certainly a fair point, Counsel member Presley, about the accessibility component, which I will bring up with the school district.
And I appreciate that there's only so much money in that grant that you can apply for and that thing you can put into to get money. So I appreciate their thinking outside of the box and looking for other funding sources.
Okay, counsel, continue discussion or you have a possible motion? Or we could have a motion too?
Motion to approve the purchase for $36,614 and transfer of the remaining balance to USD 400? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second of the questions on the motion. Seeing no questions, we'll ask our clerk to call, please.
Counsel member Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Horwath?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, counsel, motion passes. We now turn our attention to item D, picnic tables. I'll ask our parks superintendent, Neil Forrest, to come up and make a presentation.
What do you need, counsel, mayor? I came for you to present a purchase of aluminum picnic tables. A little background, the Parks Department owns and maintains more than 25 picnic tables from the city's parks. They're used year-round and also for special events. The tables are eight feet long, have wooden tops, have steel frames, and they're about 150 pounds each. The curtain tables are in fair to poor condition. A lot of the frames are bent, rusted, and need constant replacement for the tops. They rot out and they need painted. So the staff, in response, the staff recommends a budgeted replacement of the tables. These new tables we're looking at are fully aluminum. They're low maintenance, they're about the same weight, a little bit lighter. And because of those characteristics, that's the kind of table that the staff recommends. The quotes were requested on the same table from the same manufacturer, just three different distributors. I requested a quote from the following companies, Epic Sports. Unfortunately, Epic Sports did not respond to our request. Also, by the way, the, we're requesting quotes on 12 eight-foot tables, fully aluminum, and then two ADA-compliant, fully aluminum tables. SOPA Inc. provided a quote of $14,241. And the Parks and Facilities Catalog provided a quote of $12,425. It's a recommendation for a motion to approve the purchase of aluminum picnic tables from the Parks and Facilities Catalog for $12,425.
Thank you, Noah, questions for Noah?
I see it says that these were budgeted, so this has been planned in earlier. And have we, is this kind of the first phase of these tables or have we purchased some before?
No, this is the first phase, this is a rotation. I believe it is two years, every two years, we plan on having the same amount budgeted for these tables. These tables will first replace the worst tables, and they are all aluminum. So we plan to have them lightweight so we can move them. So these tables will be used for Hillings Fest this year. That answers your question.
Counsel, Mr. Pearson?
Didn't we already approve five bunch of picnic tables to use?
Those were the collapsible picnic tables that were obtained through the CBD, through a grant.
Yeah.
Those were the lightweight collapsible picnic tables that we use for?
Yeah, those will be used for different purposes than these tables.
Further questions?
Just one, so just, so these are like the ones that would be in the picnic shelters in each park?
That's correct.
Noah, those wooden ones?
No of those wooden ones with the steel frames? I think they're more than a hundred fifty pounds.
There, we do have several versions. The lightest weight are about a hundred and pounds. They're about a hundred fifty pounds, and we do have some heavy-duty tables that are...
I was thinking the same way.
Yeah, we have a birthday party. Some parties that are killers. Aluminum ones will be appreciated. Yeah, and then we've also, we're looking at possible heavier-duty frame ones as well.
I think Councilmember Smith would like to sponsor this.
Much appreciated.
Go to the dentist, Marv. I guess just from the outside, are those a hundred fifty pounds heavy enough to not go away every time?
I believe so. Just from moving them around and having experience on, on the different types, I think they were pretty safe on. And also, I, it's not mentioned here, but all the parts are replaceable. I'm talking with all the distributors. If anything does happen to them, we can easily just bolt, bolt them on, stuff back together. They're not welded, so...
Okay, thank you, Noah. Council, you have heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
It's a second.
It's a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember members, Manderwick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Council. Turn our attention to item E, Transformer Repairs. We'll call on our Public Works Director, Chris Lemon. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and I will pass on that Public Works greatly appreciated that last approval.
You think they're worth a hundred fifty pounds, too?
Yeah, I think four to five hundred pounds at times. During festival time, they, they get heavier with, with each load that they move, so...
End each year.
That might have something to do with age. Come to you tonight with Transformer Repairs that were sent in several months ago that quote did not get passed on for, to bring to you for prior approval. The repairs have been made and have actually been shipped back and invoiced, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the repairs of three Transformers from Midwest Transformer for eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Other questions for Chris?
I have a quick question. It says on here the repairs of Midwest Transfer Service came to ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty plus tax, so it was eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two twenty, including the tax?
That includes the tax, correct, yes.
Further questions of Chris? Seeing no further questions? Thank you, Chris. Council, you have heard a recommendation for a motion. Is there a motion?
Some hope. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our clerk to, once again, call roll, please.
Councilmembers, Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Manderwick?
Yes.
Motion is approved, thank you, Council, and thank you, Roxy. Now turn our attention to item F, which is the Cow Creek Change Order, and once again, calling off, call on our Community Development Director.
Good evening again. Hey, Phase One of the Cow Creek Maintenance Project is well underway, as you know. The project's been managed professionally and to expectations by Malm Construction with no major issues. Preliminary feedback from residents and property owners indicates general satisfaction with the project. Aside from the rain delays, delivery of this project has reached expectations. That's kind of just an update, really. The project has actually been going very well, minus what I think maybe is the rainiest month of June we've had in years. Or maybe it's just because I'm paying attention now. It just keeps getting delayed, but it's, it's in progress and it's, it's, it's been done really well. I'm really happy with Kenny Malm and everybody at Malm Construction. It's been a really good partnership. As the project continued to progress, one property owner reached out to express concerns about five trees, which were not removed from their property according to the original engineering plan that was communicated to them back in 2021. Upon review, the department discovered that the trees had in fact been marked to be removed in the original engineering plan but had been omitted from the final plan that was bid to Malm Construction. Property owners were the first to sign their easements, they're the first of the fifty-two to sign their easements with the expectation that these trees would be removed. I went out there and after a site visit, just, you can kind of quickly tell that the root systems are more exposed, and one of the tree's trunks has been damaged by some of the equipment. So these conditions indicate that there's potential long-term health risk for the trees. So my concern primarily is that leaving the trees in place presents potential safety and financial risk to the property owner. So staff has worked diligently to manage property owner concerns and objections based on a long-term and intergenerational priorities approach with residents as part of this process. And by that, what I mean is, throughout the process of obtaining easements, I heard a lot of stories about things that happened in the sixties, seventies, eighties, and nineties. And what I've learned is that Linsburg has a long memory. And what, and seriously, though, jokes aside, that, understanding that, the execution of this project and how well we do it the first time will have impacts for the Community Development Director in 2017, and I just want to make sure that we can maintain this creek to protect people, as we, as we've said is the point of floodplain management. So, okay, anyway, so those are the concerns. So the proposal here is from Malm Construction. It's a change order to remove the trees as presented. Again, they weren't included in the original bid, it wasn't the original engineering. Just to kind of give you some background as to the approach and why this happened, the original engineering happened in 2018 or 2019. Things obviously changed, and then based on a bunch of feedback and our desire to not cut down trees, some of the plans were reconfigured to eliminate that need. But because we already communicated it to these property owners and they had to make plans, and then it turns out that the trees are kind of exposed again, and one of the trunks is damaged, in this case, to me, it makes sense to continue moving forward. But that is a, with what was preliminary engineered, preliminarily engineered. I mean, in terms of the price, just some context, I did reach out to Kenny Malm and ask, why is it so expensive? I actually have no real sense of how much it costs to cut down trees, but to me, the number kind of stuck out. They are very large trees, they're big old trees. A couple of them, I think, are already dying, so that's part of it as well. This was the price that was bid for every tree removal already in the bid, so it's consistent with what was put forward for each tree. Most of the trees were fairly large, the ones that had to come out. So the recommendation is a motion to approve the change order in the Cow Creek Maintenance Project to remove five trees, as originally communicated to the impacted property owners, with a fiscal note of nine thousand dollars, with a funding source coming from the Stormwater Utility Fund.
And the questions for Jordan? Seeing no questions, thank you, Jordan. Council, you've heard the recommendation to approve a motion regarding five trees at a cost of nine thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Salute.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is, are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers, Peterson?
Yes.
Manderwick?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Motion is approved, thank you, Council.
I didn't keep this on our tab.
Thank you, Roxy, and we'll turn our attention to item number twelve. Is there a need for executive session this evening?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Thank you. We'll turn our attention to item thirteen. Seeing no further business to come before the Council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some hope.
Second.
Motion, all in favor of the motion to adjourn? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion's appear to have it, motion's appear to have it. Thank you, Council. Thank you for covering a lot of business and good, and good work.